All right, so we'll call this meeting June 14th of the planning board in the session. I guess we'll start with a roll call of everybody, I think it's everybody on the planning board in the room.
No, you don't need to do a roll call vote because you're in person.
And the only person who's not here is we know is not here, so we're good to go. All right, so let's jump into our first thing then, we'll start with the public hearing for a definitive subdivision plan application of AWMW LLC for improvement of Sunnyside Lane. And I believe they're asking for continuance that has submitted revised plans that require review for Public Works Engineering Division and has requested continuance to June 28.
I'll vote in favor of that.
Yeah, so did we have a motion?
We're gonna need a motion.
We need to make a motion.
Okay, so I will make a motion that we put the delay the public hearing as requested.
Continue it.
Sorry, I don't know why I did that.
To July 28. Oh, June 28, that's 7:00 P.M.
That's 7:00 P.M.
Second.
All right, I think all should favor. On both, oh, yeah, I forgot.
Yeah.
All of us in favor.
And then I need a separate motion to accept the time extension.
Okay, I'll make a motion for do we have time for that for time extension to also to
No, the time extension is July 1st. Yep, July 1st.
All right, I make a motion to grant a time extension to July 1st.
Except the time extension.
Except the time extension to July 1st.
I'll second.
Favor.
Hi.
All right, next up is industry business election of officers. Yeah, so we have two positions or three positions to elect, chair, vice chair. Does anybody have any, I know the easy one. I nominate Haley Orville as vice chair. She already.
She accepted this.
She's not being voluntold, so she knows.
She's not here, she gets stuck doing his own.
She did agree.
Well, on those grounds, I could second that nomination.
All of us in favor.
Bye.
Bye.
As another nomination, I nominate Linda Miller as clerk.
Second.
All of us in favor.
Bye.
Well, I think that leaves us nominating Nathan as chair, which I do.
Second.
All of us in favor.
Bye.
Next, book of businesses, West Concord Advisory Committee recommendations. Do we have somebody for that or online for that?
Yeah, Barbara Morrison, Laura Page, who the select board nominated?
Yes.
They're on there. Do we want to give each a moment to sort of introduce themselves? Yeah, so Laura, I see you up on the top left here, so I'll just go with you first if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to just introduce myself. Hi, everyone, I'm Laura Payne. My family and I moved to Concord in 2019, in June 2019, so we're still sort of new to the community. But I'm really interested in getting involved in a lot of the different community aspects, especially in West Concord where we live. My son is a student at Thoreau Elementary and we've loved it here so far. And so I would love to be part of the advisory council for West Concord.
Fantastic. Barbara?
Yeah, hi, it's Barbara Morse. I am at the opposite end of the spectrum. I probably lived in West Concord for about, probably close to 60 years at this point. I previously was on Concord Housing Development Corporation and then on the Long Range Planning Committee. I just finished up three years on the board of my church. You learn a lot by being on one of the town committees. You learn how much they contribute to how the town is run. And so I saw that there was a need and I decided I'd jump into something else if I could.
All right, and then we actually, we need to officially nominate them to the select board, right?
So you recommend. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, so you, somebody would move to put forth Laura and Barbara to be, as in, to be nominated to be a member of the advisory committee.
I, I make a motion that we approve the select board's nomination of Barbara Morse and Laura Page to the West Concord Advisory Committee.
Have they already nominated them? No, no.
Oh, recommendations.
Don't we recommend to the select board that they nominate?
Yes.
Yeah.
I second the motion that you made. Spoke through your.
It says nomination.
Oh, yeah.
All right, all those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing from you.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next up, the planning board authorization signatory pages.
Yep, so every year, as allowed by master on the law, the board can designate individuals to sign on behalf of the board instead of the entire board having to sign a document.
Can I ask a dumb question? What's the DP LA direct?
Marcia Grassman. She is the director.
Yeah, I knew her. I never saw that.
Abreviation.
Yeah.
So you just need a motion to authorize the
Yes.
Individuals, I assume that we're.
Yes.
So you have the language. Yeah, yeah, so I'll make a motion to authorize the chair, vice chair clerk, and department of land management director and town planner to execute certify and endorse approval of plans presented to the board pursuant to chapter 41 and related certificates, releases, and other instruments. And any of said persons are authorized to act alone under this.
I'll second that.
All right, next up, sorry.
Next up. So before you all leave, I have two pages where everybody has to sign one and on my desk. So before we really leave, I'll go get them because the board actually has to sign these documents. One gets mailed to the registry of deeds and one gets mailed to land court.
All right, next up is A and R for Emerson Hospital at 131 and 133 Cornack. And I actually have to accuse myself from this as an employee of Emerson itself.
So since the vice chair is not here. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. Okay. Ah ha, a coup. Um, Elizabeth. Okay, yes, I will, I will explain this. So this is, let me expand this a little bit. So this is the Emerson Hospital campus and it, it's actually consists of one main campus parcel. And then this little parcel right here. And it's, it's a, it's a very confusing configuration because part of the property is registered land through land court. And the other is, is that right, unregistered land, which is the registry of deeds. So they have to go through a lot to change the boundaries and this is just the first step. Basically, what they are doing is there's a lot line that goes around a portion of the existing John Cummings building. And they are expanding that lot line to take a little bit more of the John Cummings building. So they're reconfiguring the lot lines within this area. It's just very challenging to see because of the building underneath it.
I was gonna say, I can't tell if this is the before or the after.
All right, it, it is, there is no before. It's the, the existing lot line goes right in here. And they're moving it out to here. And then this one is getting moved. I think out to here.
Oh, so it will no longer cut off a corner of that building. It will encompass basically the whole building?
It, it will encompass most of the building.
Well, not, not that upper left portion, but the whole lower right portion? No, it is too confusing. I'm not even gonna ask the question. It's A and R anyway.
Correct, so I think it comes down here and then I think it will go this way.
I think if you go to the bottom corner of the plan.
Is that showing?
It might show it a little bit more. Not that it's clearer, but if you go all the way to the right, that one. So you can see the, next to each other.
This line, this is the, this is the new lot line, this darker line on the outside. And this is the old lot line right down here.
Okay.
And why do they do this?
I I don't know.
Oh, well, there must be some purpose behind it.
I, I'm sure it has to do with ownership patterns because John Cummings building is a condo.
Oh.
So it's, yeah.
Title insurance or something.
Yeah.
I didn't know the Cummings building being con.
It, no, it has been.
Oh, okay.
Is, it already is.
Oh, okay.
So it's gotta be to encompass different portions that have been
I see.
Redone inside.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, with all the doctors and stuff.
Yeah, individual doctors on the different.
Right. Interesting.
So the, it's the area of each lot and the configuration of each lot, each lot is changing, but not, it's not affecting the frontage.
Okay. Can make the motion. I mean, does anyone have any questions? I don't really understand what the purpose is, but it's A and R anyway, so. I, I move that the planning board endorsed the plan by Beals and Thomas title Plan of Land Bends Hospital Conference Massachusetts dated May 3rd, 2022, as approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision, because it shows a proposed conveyance which changes the size and shape of the lots in such a manner that frontage is not affected and authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan.
I second that.
Those in favor?
All those in favor?
Okay. You can come back, Nathan.
What do we need for a call? Three?
Four. A form of this board is four, unless it's a special permit, then it's a super majority, has to be five.
All right, and on the heels of that, A and R is another A and R for 2B Upland Road and 406 Old Marlboro Road, number 2731 and 2732.
I'm fairly sure everybody is familiar with where 2B Upland Road is. And so this is Old Marlboro Road right here. And 2B Upland is, here's Upland Road down here. This is currently two lots. Can figure differently, 406. It's basically just this portion. So these two lots are being reconfigured to add this additional area to 406. To, what is currently 2B would still be considered a parcel. It is not a building lot, does not have sufficient frontage. It's only 50 feet right here in Upland. And 406 Old Marlboro, the property is in the residence B zone district. Requires 150 feet of frontage in the beach, which, so I don't get everything wrong. And 40,000 square feet of area. This lot is being configured utilizing the reduced frontage provision in the zoning bylaw. It allows the frontage to go down to 120 feet. So long as the lot widens out to where the house would be located. To where it would meet the frontage requirement. So this is being considered a frontage exception on lot.
Is that because it's 112?
Yes.
Andrew, would you mind? Oh.
Oh, thank you.
So is residence B?
Yes.
125 is the regular, that would go down to 100.
Down to 100, and this lot.
20,000, it's only 16,000 today, so to an acre.
This lot currently only has 100, I think it says 112.
I see your point how it needs to widen out in order to get the frontage exception. I don't see the needs to go as far back as it's being expanded to. I wonder if that's because of FAR limits to allow more.
I, I don't know why and I.
It's an A and R.
It's an A and R and that's not part of the board's.
This is, well, it's certainly not part of our criteria for approving.
So it has the required area and has the required frontage under the frontage exception provision. And lot 2B is being labeled as a parcel and is not a building lot. The only other recommendation I would make to the board is I don't believe there's a note on the plan. There was a note in the application of that section of the zoning bylaw for the frontage exception is being used. And I would probably recommend that a note be added to the plan just stating that that is a frontage exception lot under that provision of the zoning bylaw.
Sorry, I think this is on the newer agenda. Who is? Who is this?
So that section is 2.4 of the zoning bylaw.
I, I know, I meant who's basically forwarding this, who's presenting this for the.
I just did.
Oh, okay, well then, I second that. Sorry.
Wait, but don't we need a motion from the board to say you can drop the best attachment here?
Right. But you were saying you just did that.
What, I didn't present at the plan.
No, 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 I meant, so like the prior one was by Beals and Thomas Inc., who's.
Oh.
I just need to change the language.
All right, it's not on this.
6922.
There you go. Now I understand, sorry.
It's all right.
There you go.
Team United.
It is not up on the screen. Oh, there it is.
That corner.
GCG associates.
What did that say? It's smart device, what?
Did you drop any extra notes? Andrew, you want me to make the motion?
Oh. You just need to change out the.
I just need to substitute. The name and the date is.
June, Andrew, you said it's June 9.
It's June 9.
Okay, all right, then I move to endorse the plan by GCG associates titled, uh-oh, I need the plan of land title.
Title.
It's right there in front of you, subdivision approval not required plan of land.
Oh, it's, yes.
Oh, subdivision approval not required plan of land for 2B Upland Road and 406 Old Marlboro Road dated June 9th, 2022, as approval not required because the plan is not a subdivision because it shows a proposed conveyance which changes the size and shape of the lots in such a manner the frontage is not affected. And authorize the chair, clerk, or town planner to endorse the plan with a note being added to the plan that a frontage except, that this is a frontage exception lot under the frontage exception provision of the zoning bylaw.
Yes. I see that. All those in favor?
Was there a second?
I didn't second it.
All those in favor?
I.
Three things at once, I can't read it like.
Only because I have script.
Next up, we have planning board designees and liaison communities, yeah, liaisons, community preservation committee. All right, so I and I know there were some that you
What's?
Wanted, yeah.
Lynda, do you want to stay on the Hedgesham Field Advisory?
No.
Okay, yeah, well, I'm on the Hedgesham Field Advisory Council as well, so you should probably stick me with it, I guess.
Excellent, excellent, yes.
It's not very exciting, I can tell you that. You hear neighbors complain about the airline voice.
Right.
There's nothing can be done about it. It's all within FAA guidelines, so you know.
All right.
Wherever.
I'm, I'm interested in being sort of coordinator liaison for all of the housing, portable housing groups. That's my interest, so.
I
So that's, that's a Concord Portable Housing Trust and all three groups.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
Just above.
Yeah, one just.
Concord Housing Development Corporation.
So we need to find somebody for the community preservation committee. Anybody? I think people are.
I, I can do it, I guess, I know it's a.
That's probably what I'm more interested in.
It's a pretty heavy lift in the fall.
Yeah.
But.
I know someone needs to do it, that's the one.
You get to give hundreds of thousands of dollars to all these people.
Yeah, I'm certainly very willing to do West Concord Advisory Committee. I must point out that I was a member of the West Concord Advisory Committee for its first year of existence, and if you consider that to be preternusuous.
Not at all.
I'd say you bring knowledge to the place, so.
How do I get my zoom back?
Oh, well, that's the limit of my. I don't know.
I do not have control over the, this is.
I'm talking more.
I lost the stream. Maybe they have no. Not on there.
Oh, because you're the host, right? So that's just playing what the host is playing?
Yes. Nope, that's not helping.
So media controls?
Yeah.
Thanks, okay, that's weird. Never seen much before.
Right, I have to stop touching. All right, so since you said you are gonna do work back?
Sure.
And then we want to leave the others.
What do you see, please? And then would you like to leave the other, Nathan, as far as he's second?
I think Haley wants, I don't know if we want to switch.
It should be climate action, I think it's climate action advisory board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you want to switch or?
Actually, I didn't talk to Haley about that, so, I mean, we can, let's leave him the same or.
So if somebody would like to. Because I don't even think you have to make a motion or anything, just everybody agrees and
Yeah.
And I will let all the appropriate people know.
All right, and then we're able to bring up the goals and projects, the discussion for 22, 23.
Are we looking at the revised memo that was put this bringing up, or are we just saying whatever we feel like right now?
I should bring up the one from last year.
Last year, yep.
It's like, it's like another.
So the, just for goal number, one, the board had put forth two additional zoning bylaw amendments, both of those passed. One was the amendment to the formula business and the other was the amendment to the excess additional dwelling unit bylaw. So those two did pass. At the board's meeting next time on the 28th. The board will have a more end-up discussion of the direction to go about the Road Depot Business District rezoning, which did not pass. Sorry. Number three, the crosstown connect shuttle, crosstown connect has, has not rebounded from COVID yet. There currently is no intermunicipal agreement. It expired and it just doesn't seem to be enough traction yet to move forward with crosstown connect. But last night at the select board meeting, the select board did vote to allocate $100,000 in ARPA funds to do a pilot visitor trolley shuttle this summer. We're hoping to get it started within the next week. And that will go from the train station to six different stops around the concert center. And with the hope that we will be able to start gathering some data on ridership and working with the National Park, Town of Lincoln, Town of Lexington. We will be filing for a federal lands access program grant, a flat grant, to do a much larger three-town shuttle program and also includes an additional actual loop, West Concord Loop. Currently, the pilot will do two stops during the day to West Concord, to the commuter rail station there. But not one shuttle, which is not enough to do a continuous loop with stops, additional stops in West Concord because the time limit gets too long and you have to kind of keep it under a half an hour to do the loop or you know, you won't have the ridership, but at least have two stops during the day to West Concord if people want to go. Go around the shops, get lunch, and then come back to Conference Center. We didn't feel we wanted to try and expand it this summer because Commonwealth Ave in the next few weeks will begin to be torn apart by National Grid and will be completely redone from Beherel Streets down to Kenny Dunn Square. And there'll also be constructing the new pedestrian bump outs and the complete streets program for that area, so. And it's going to be a challenge to get through or COMA over the summer, so. So while we didn't move forward with any Crosstown Connect Shuttle, we are moving forward with at least some component. And still waiting for the state to open up the Workforce Transportation Grant Program. Because once, if they do open that grant program up again, we will submit our application and that, that workforce shuttle, the pilot shuttle for this summer will be from nine to four. But the Workforce Transportation Shuttle that we had proposed and got funding for was seven to seven. So we're still hopeful that we can move forward with that and tie that in now with this visitor shuttle, but then also with the flat grant and the much larger shuttle. As we get ready, you know, it's only three years away for the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of Revolution. They're expecting the National North Bridge Visitor Center gets approximately a million, pre-COVID, a million visitors a year. And they're expecting at least two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand more from that, so we hope to get all the bugs worked out in these next two years, so come twenty twenty five, we'll have a, you know, just a great, you know, a great transportation finally in Concord. Yeah, Marcia, Marcia and I have only been working on this probably for about thirty years, so almost as long as the bridge or the asset, but. So that's an update on that one.
Before we, related note, bicycles, am I imagining things, or did I see a Concord branded?
Yes, yes, there is a Concord branded bike share program and there's bikes. They tried to start it right before COVID with a different bike company that went under, so they're now working with the, a new vendor this year. And so there's bikes at the Visitor Center, right behind the Visitor Center part there. And I think there is a few bikes in West Concord. Also in West Concord, right on the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Marcia got a grant to do, build a bike shelter. So that was just done a month or so ago. And, you know, they're gearing up for the ribbon cutting for the bridge in November. Even though people are using it now. Use it when the contractor's not there, please, it's their liability, their insurance, so. So, yeah, it's a lot, you know, a lot's happening transportation related. And with the budget that passed town meeting, it's been, Marcia and I have been putting in for transportation planner in our budget for four years. So finally, a halftime position finally got approved. So, yeah, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty excited, what's happening on that front, so.
Yeah, I saw one of those bikes earlier or last week, and I said, I remember it was trying to get off the ground before COVID, so I'm glad to see. See them out and out.
Me too, if it's conquered granted, does that mean you can't hop on that bike and ride it to Arlington and back home there? Or wherever some other bike share is.
I, you know what, I'm not, I'm not sure the, the range that you can.
Well, because.
Whether it operates with other systems.
Right, the previous ones were connected to other towns, so it could be that, you could pick it up here and drop it in the old Denver.
Or wherever has bike stations, right, so I just wonder, you know what, I'll find out.
I suspect the comment is just a tag that's torn on.
Which is fine, because if somebody drops it off in Arlington, a person in Arlington can say, oh, I could ride to Concord on this bike and buy it for reasons. Or, you know, shop in any other location. Or disvisit the bridge. So as part of your, your goals, you usually, as a separate agenda item, which will be in, you know, the next agenda or the first one in July, review the action items list. And go through and update that and talk about that, so that'll be a separate agenda item. And then the board had quite a few discussions about what analyzing the measures to address mansionization, and I think the next iteration of this memo is taking all of these and what I'm telling you now, basically, put it in written form in the memo that gets sent to the board, so. I just, right now, I can't remember where the board left off with item five, so. I'll look back, it was, it was at least six before, I think it was, had to have been sometime in December or January was the last time the board talked about it, so in the update memo. It was, yes. I'll include that update on where the board left off with this. With item six, with the budget that just passed town meeting, funding to hire a consultant to assist with the update of subdivision rules and rights was passed. So given its cost, I have to actually go out to get requests for proposals. It may also trigger requirement in SAGA Register, I just, I don't have those thresholds memorized, but, so. Now that we're almost to July first, that's something that I can do, and so that's something that that's something that the board will see happening soon, what I imagine is hiring consultant, having a basically a first kickoff meeting with town, all the different departments and divisions that touch every subdivision that, you know, comes through, having a kickoff meeting with the consultant with them and planning out, basically trying to plan out I'm going to say a, a work program on what needs to happen as far as meetings with the board, meetings with stakeholders, public input. And then have the consultant come to the board and present that, and so that's how I see that kind of moving forward from here. And will it be a public process? I mean, in terms of hearings or, so, so ultimately, I mean, there'll be, there'll be all the public meetings that happen with the board. The consultant will have, you know, stakeholder meetings where they'll meet with different people in the community. And ultimately, the subdivision control law requires the planning board to have a noticed public hearing. So an actual legal notice will have to go on paper and the board will actually have to hold a public hearing. But that'll, that'll be, you know, when the final, you know, when you get to at least a rough draft of something, having a public hearing, getting input, continuing the public hearing out. You know, four months to refine things and then having, you know, the final public hearing. So would this be like a two year process, or how long? I, I would imagine, you know, probably six to eight months.
Then we wouldn't get something in in time for town meeting next year.
This does not require town meeting approval.
Okay.
These are the rules and regulations for the Planning Board under subdivision control law, so it requires a notice public hearing, it does not require approval from town.
And then who would be in charge of sort of getting the, the input from constituents as opposed to from people from town offices, like developers?
That'll be part of the consultants' contract. So number seven is researching, but the board's actually gone harder than that, we the board's seen the first rough draft and I'm still working on refining that, you know, that rough draft to get the next version and then getting input again from, you know, citizens and stakeholders and, and then bringing that back to the planning board again, similar to the subdivision rules and regulations. And these are site plan rules and regulations for the board, it will also require a public legal notice to be published in a public hearing before the board can adopt them, so, you know, this is both of, both of these are significant projects, so I'm, while we're, you know, trying to do the site plan rules and regs in-house. I'm happy that we'll have a consultant with the subdivision rules and regs. That one's a little bit more complicated because it will pull in the DEP Stormwater Handbook requirements, Public Works construction standards and different fire department requirements. Requirements for natural resources, so that one is going to take a significant amount of interdepartmental coordination. Along with trying to update both of these documents with sustainability, which Sustainability Director has given notice. She is took a job with the University of Minnesota. So I believe she's leaving at the end of the month. So that's going to kind of put a little wrench in moving forward on some of these things, but it, it's not, the board has more than enough to do, so. I'm not, I'm not concerned, so. We'll keep you busy. And I have a draft for updates to the tree preservation rules and regs, working with Will Holden is the land manager in Natural Resources and he is our certified arborist. So when the tree preservation bylaw first got passed, there wasn't anybody on staff who was capable of being the reviewing agent. So we had hired an outside consultant to help us and, you know, it worked out fantastic. They were with Davy Tree, who is the consultant for Public Works.
They, they came and.
Yes.
For the presentation.
Yep, so the two and a half years, two and a half years, three years, wow. They made some recommendations for some updates to the tree preservation bylaw that the board did two years ago. They've also made numerous recommendations to update the rules and regs. And Will has also, since he's took, he took over six months ago being the reviewing agent. You know, they worked side by side for his first six months and so we have developed a whole list of changes that Will will come to a meeting in, probably in the next two or three meetings, come and give a presentation on that. What we are finding is that some of the changes that we feel need to be made in the rules and regs should also be somehow reflected in the bylaw, so we may be recommending another bylaw amendment for town meeting. But we'll, we'll leave all that out and explain it to the board. Number nine is is something that's still kind of in, in flux. We do have some funds in the Planning Division budget to hire a, basically a traffic consultant who deals with parking to look at the parking requirements, look at the industry standards, look at, I'm going to say the real world standards and practicality, there's a lot of information out there on parking that, you know, gets generated every month and not quite sure how, how or if that funding is going to be made available for specifically for the zoning aspect, because I do know that the town manager, based on conversations with the Select Board, is also interested in looking at parking in general and the public parking and the meter parking and that would be a good opportunity for I'm going to say it's just a synergy with on parking to get something that's more comprehensive done. So at, at this point, I'd like to keep this on for the board's goals. But I won't know how, how to frame it as a project, at least for another few weeks. And the MBTA communities zoning requirements, we're, we're still waiting for DHCD to issue their guidelines. Nobody, nobody's sure where they're at yet or what's going to happen. They received a significant amount of comments from communities. So this is again, just the, it's going to be a wait and see approach, because I'm, I'm still not sure whatever comes out of this, I'm still not sure it's ever going to be something that Concord could ever meet or, or, or wants to meet, I'm, you know, so it's this one is one of those items just to, you know, see, see where the chips land with their guidelines and have the conversation in the community on which way to go.
I was at the Housing Institute conference.
Oh, on Devon's?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
And, well, I didn't go, it was still for Churchill. And I don't recall saying that the person in the Baker administration who's overseeing that was was very firm about this is not an option. Which I, I know they've said before, but you're still saying.
Um, it, it's.
Yes, but it's not.
Well, it's going to be interesting because some of the comments that DHCD received dealt with how, from the legislation, how the guidelines expanded beyond the language in the legislation and, and specifically dealing in the legislation. It's here are the three grants that you won't be eligible for. And the, the guidelines talk about that DHCD can, you know, use compliance in any decision. So that's one of those items, we're still not sure how it's going to play out in the draft guidelines. I, I, it's in the draft, I can't see DHCD taking it out, so it probably will, probably will remain. One of the items in Concord wasn't the, the only community deals with the infrastructure issue and how the MBTA community's requirement made no provision for dealing with infrastructure improvements that would be required to meet this requirement, and the DHCD draft guidelines didn't either. And so that is definitely going to be another provision of if maybe the state's saying this is a requirement, but the state cannot make a community e- even, even if Concord were to zone for fifty units per acre, the infrastructure for our wastewater treatment plant isn't there, and it will never be there until the feds and the state And it will never be there until the feds and the state amend our discharge permit and different improvements are made. So, so there's just, there's a lot of factors. It, it's. It, it is.
That's another.
Yeah.
So we were worried about that too.
Um, I, you know what? It's, it's on, it's on your radar, but you know, until we see the, you know, what happens with the draft guidelines, nobody knows what you're really up against.
I think, I think that, that was it. I feel one thing, as I think about it, that wasn't mentioned in the accomplishments category was with our co-sponsor of the historical commissions.
So that should be, that should be definitely added.
Say that again?
The scenic byways.
Like that.
So I, the, the planning board was consulted and was asked if we would co-sponsor that. We did, but we, they, they historical commission did all. Yeah, they did all the heavy lifting, but we were supported, so important of it.
Should it not be on our goals for this year as well to complete the, the, the rules and regs?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And I have a question of protocol, which is I read over the latest draft and I have some comments on it. Should I present those at a public meeting when it's next on the agenda? Should I?
So.
To, to the scenic.
After what?
Yeah, the scenic roads.
No, if, if you have suggested edits or anything.
I can email them to you.
Yep, you can just.
Okay, great. I'll do that. It's currently, you know, the historical commission last week, I gave a presentation on what it is the board is asking them to do. So your members are going back and then it'll go to their next meeting. I, I think it, your memo forced the public works commission to have a meeting in July when they usually pick July off. So they'll be discussing it.
And he does.
And. But no, so it's, it's, it's currently a draft that's, you know, so if any of the board members have comments or suggested edits, send them along to me. I'll start incorporating things. Well, I'm asking about protocol. Somebody emailed me out of blue saying, hey, can we talk about transit? Probably did not know that I just got on the planning board. Do I need, because I'm a member of the planning board, do I need to do anything about that? Or can I just up and go at lunch with them or something?
Okay.
Why did there are?
Since I'm a consultant.
Do something.
Oh, God.
Or if it's, you know, like a, like a, what is it? An open meeting law concern? Where you have like three people from the board. You know, that kind of thing.
But if it's just me and some person who wanted to talk, I could do it. I would, I would say if it's, if it's a, a project that the board is working on or something that's happening in the community, you know, and somebody just wants to meet with a board member, have a conversation, you know, that's fine. I think if there is an application or a project application before the board, then, you know, the conversation should happen, you know, in the public, in the public realm. If the board is, you know, have, has a specific role in, you know, whether it's you're making a recommendation to the Board of Appeals or whether you are actually the, you know, the board who has to, you know, approve or deny a project. That should be done in the, in the public meeting.
Okay.
But no, if it's, they saw my name on a five-year-old document and said, oh, look, your name and the word transit appeared together. Can we talk? So, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, great. I'll find out what they want to cover. But I don't think it will have anything to do with the board. And if it does, I'll bring it to the board.
Is there anything else you want to cover? No, for the?
No, for, so.
Then it will have it separate.
Yeah. So you'll have, so you'll, you'll get my updated, you know, like an updated draft memo, which every year the, the board takes that memo and goes through updates, you know, things from the past year and accomplishments, what you want to do for the next year, and then actually votes on it and make it set to the town manager in the select board. So that will happen. I'll update this memo. I just went over, just gave an update every, to you. And, and then, so you'll see the, the draft for your FY 22, 23 goals. And let's see, was there anything? Was there, were there any other projects or items that you remember?
Well, it's a new.
Not remembering. They still have a lot. You still have a lot on that, on that list. So. As a new planning board member, it's among my goals to read over the entire zoning bylaw and the, everything else and fix any typos or unclear language, but I'm sure that it will take me a long time to go through everything. So there is this word on the street that there may be a fall town meeting. And generally, the planning board does not put zoning bylaw amendment for, for its fall town meeting, for a special town meeting, but.
But it's maybe.
If, maybe if it's housekeeping item.
Yeah.
Sure. I don't, I don't.
Then I'll keep that in mind and see what I.
What's the purpose of the fall town meeting?
What's the rumor?
It would be the middle school, but.
Yeah. If I had to guess, it'd be the middle school, but I'd also heard there may be, maybe other things. And then.
I just had one question. It's kind of random out there. So last meeting, we had, had the site plan approval or whatever plan for a new restaurant, which didn't go because it required a bathroom because they have to be able to, so is that a zoning issue?
Yes. So.
I, I, I don't want to, I just wasn't sure if it was a board health issue or how, where that sits. But is that something that is not a heavy lift to at least start the discussion about whether it's appropriate to have takeout restaurants?
So, yes. So that is usually, again, a standing goal on your memo is to think about other zoning bylaw amendments that, that aren't the big picture thing, like, you know, Throw Depot or when, or did earth removal or the PRD changes? But so other, other tweaks that can be made. And that deals with the prohibition of fast food.
Right.
And so I am working with the public health inspector Gabby White. And to, that'll be when I do your update on this memo, some of the things that the building commissioner and I have noticed that, you know, these are some tweaks that could be made to the zoning bylaws and certain things. And providing a history, the fast, prohibition of fast food was adopted. And the legal women, the lead of women voters was the proponent team dot board back in 74, I think it was. But it really had to do with air quality, drive-throughs, trash. And we're, we're now to the point where drive-throughs are still prohibited. And you're working on, you know, you know, the plastic bottles and you know, other, you know, plastics and those types of things. But the understanding is that what that prohibition has done is there's been a policy through the building commissioner back, started like 35 years ago, that if you had a restaurant, 12 seats, at least 12 seats, you would be considered a restaurant because you would have this majority of the people being able to sit down. You would still have some to-go things, but you were classified as a restaurant and not a, you know, fast food establishment. 12 seats spur something, 12 seats and a restaurant now kicks you into a title five category of a restaurant. Title five, it is a minimum of 1,000 gallons per day for a restaurant of two, I think it's 28 seats. And then it's for every seat over that, it's an additional three gallons per day. 1,000 gallons per day will immediately get you a little over $40,000 sewer improvement fee. So if you want to do a little Asian bubble tea restaurant with 12 seats, it immediately just kicked you into, you know, a $40,000 sewer improvement fee. Additionally, the plumbing code is now with a restaurant with 12 seats, kicks you into a requirement that you have to have a unisex handicap bathroom, which is of a specific size, dimension, fixtures. So if you have a little takeout Asian bubble tea restaurant that's in a space of only 750 square feet, you basically just took out a chunk. It also kicked you into this food code dealing with three base sinks, hand sinks, separate closets for cleaning. And so it, it really does, you know, put a prohibition on, you know, these types of, you know, small, you know, mom and pop type restaurants. You know, if, if McDonald's wanted to, to come into town, you know, they'd figure out a way. And, you know, you can, so that will be one of the items, but I'm trying to think.
Food trucks?
No, food trucks are a whole new other thing. Okay. And the, the board has had two or three conversations about food trucks. And it, it's, it's a much different thing. And, you know, there has been, again, a policy regarding food trucks. If, if somebody has a private birthday party at their house with their kids and they buy a food truck. And, but technically in the zoning bylaw, food trucks are prohibited. So that is another item that the building commissioner would like the board to talk about. Not, not wholesale, just allowing food trucks in Concord. But, you know, if it's, if it's a residential private property and they want to have a food truck, you know, for a special event, or if it's a corporate and they want to have an employee appreciation day, or if, if it's a town, town event, that, you know, if they could, you know, allow food trucks maybe in 2025. For certain things, but having in the zoning bylaw that limited provision so that it's, basically for the building commissioner, it, it takes that policy ambiguity out and, and, and defines it. And, and then it doesn't, it doesn't become an issue. But really making sure that the conversation with the brick and mortar restaurants, understand that they, they won't be, they won't be allowed to park on the street anywhere they want. They won't, some business can't have a food truck come every Wednesday. So, but it's, but at least allowing some provision of food trucks. If, you know, if you want to have a birthday party for your son and that pizza food truck comes or the, a Sunday food truck, ice cream sundae truck comes out of.
So do they not allow, is it not coffee trucks and like construction sites and stuff? I mean, because you could take that and expand it into a, serve tacos out of them too, you know?
I, as, as far as like the, I'm not sure how those, what are they called? What's the?
I've seen the mobile pizza oven council cap that, so it must be a thing.
And that would be that ambiguous policy that's been established and the building commission.
Yeah, because you take the poor people with the, the restaurant that couldn't do it, okay? Why couldn't they just park a truck up in front of it? You know, I mean.
Right. So it, it's, it's something that should be discussed, but that is separate than fast food.
How did that sandwich business survive that was over by Crosby's all those years by the train track?
That was, that was a very, that was very, a very legally non-conforming.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And, and slipped and slightly illegal operation.
Got it. Okay.
I believe their special permit was only to be able to serve cookies and cupcakes or something like that.
Too.
Well, um. So that, that one, that one morphed over the years and, and just existed.
Okay. All right. So now I have a better understanding of how that fits into our current.
So, so that's the other thing, you know, what people kind of don't understand with the food code is that there is no grandfathering in the food code.
Right.
So if a business is sold and there's a new owner, you are required to bring that kitchen up to code. So.
Everybody's benefit.
Yes. All eat. Whatever's going into the new 99.
The voice of torches.
So I, you know, I will be putting together a list. Oh, one item that does need to happen, I'm just not sure who, who does this is repealing the inclusionary bylaw, inclusionary housing bylaw, since it was completely struck down by Land Corp. So I don't know. I, I just have to ask town council whether, who the town has to actually formally repeal it or not. Food trucks on my list. So I hesitate to bring this up, given how much the board has on its plate, and it's not instantly urgent. But I noticed in the Throw Depot rezoning proposal, that it had language in it talking about what could be done on Main Street versus not on the Main Street. Way back a decade and a half ago, when we changed, when the town changed the zoning for West Concord, there is the West Concord Village District and then surrounding that West Concord Business District. In the Village District, you're not allowed to have any housing on the ground floor, period. And it was written that way because there was no way to say, you can have housing in the back, but you can't have housing in the front. And it would actually, in my opinion, be very reasonable to allow housing in the back as long as there was an active use along the main street. And if there's a way that we could do that, we could loosen that up. And same, in the exact inverse, the White Hand Pantry Mall, whose official name is the West Concord Shopping Plaza. If it ever gets redeveloped, right now it's under West Concord Business and that means it's got excessive setbacks and insufficient keeping the parking in the back. And something very like the Throw Depot zoning proposal would be an interesting way of rezoning it, possibly even an expanded single proposal. So, um, and the butters wouldn't necessarily have a problem.
So I'm not.
Say that a little louder.
The butters wouldn't care.
So I am, I am definitely not going to start a conversation about a zoning overhaul in West Concord until after the board figures out what it would like to, direction it wants to go to Throw Depot. But to, to that end, in the Throw Depot Business District zoning that the board developed, there is the one section with some of the changes to the combined business residence provisions that separate from Throw Depot, but just looking at those combined business residence provisions and whether the board wants to think about just amending that section in the, in the zoning bylaw to adopt some of those provisions.
Could be taken out separately regardless of whether we move forward with.
Right. Regardless of whether you do anything with the Throw.
Right, regardless of whether you do anything with the thorough depot. That is something that, um, I think there was general support for, um, even, even by some of the people in the road depot for, um, that combined business residence element and, um, you know, because currently, um, to your example, Sue, right now, it says it, the building, the business and the commercial and the residential have to be in the same building. Um, well, why, you know, the, the draft bylaw, um, had, you know, you were allowed to have them in separate buildings. But the commercial had to be, you know, in the front and part of the business district and the residential could be behind it. Um, and part of the, you know, it's almost a community behind it. So I think there are, um, some elements of that combined business resident that the board could just discuss um, as, just as a zoning bylaw amendment, um, to stand on its own.
Right, and I was even thinking in terms of the same building, like, um, the dancing studio is a, a, a fine use of property, but it for some reason it were relieved to have that building is deep enough that you could have a business in the front and an apartment in the back in the very same building without it damaging, um, the lively streetscape, but it's currently against that.
I can, um, I can tell you from, um, conversations that I've had with, um, developers who are um, looking at doing combined business residence projects, um, that some of the provisions currently, like, the bylaw amendment that the board was looking at for your depot, uh, changed the affordability requirement, um, because currently, um, any projects that, um, are five or more, the requirement for affordable housing is twenty percent. Well, if you have a project, um, especially now, if you have a project that's only eight units of residential and two have to be affordable, um, that project is not economically feasible. Um, and just the, the cost of labor and materials and financing. And so is there, is there an op, is there some other option that, um, or a waiver provision, uh, where an alternative community benefit can be weighed? Um, I don't, I don't know what that is, but allowing more flexibility in how a project gets developed and its community benefit. Um, you know, there, there may be other things that we're just not thinking about where from a purely developer financing aspect, there, there may be things that they could do, um, that are equally helpful in the community, you know, in some other aspect, uh, instead of, um, you know, affordable units. And, and so that's, that's a conversation I, um, would also suggest the board have.
So just a question, um, for this conversation two weeks from now. So originally, I had the impression that everyone thought that the, uh, pro-business, uh, pro depot business district proposal had to all be done together because there were too many, um, issues to.
There's, there were too many, yeah, there's too many pieces where, um, to, to do, like the, the parking in the rear. Um, you can't require parking in the rear unless you change the setbacks, um, and allow certain things to happen um, within different, you know, within the different setbacks and.
But, but you think there's a nuanced way to take some of the provisions?
For the combined business residence, um, bylaw.
Just for that portion?
Yes.
Okay.
Not sort of,
let's look to see if we can take other elements out, um, as well.
No, I was, right now, I was just thinking the combined business residence. Um, because, you know, that's in all of the business districts of that's a, you know, allowed use. Or, or special permit.
Okay. So that's all I had.
That's it?
That's it. Eight, eight thirty yet.
Great, well, thank you, uh, we'll move on to draft meeting minutes for May twenty-fourth. I was not here for the twenty-fourth, so I can't really comment on the accuracy.
Well, you can comment.
Suppose. Do you want to share, share your comments?
Oh, uh, uh, I showed the, the draft that the board received, um, already included, um, at edits from Linda and Sue, so, so you don't need to talk about them because that's what went.
Okay, alright. So other than those, were there any comments, edits, questions?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the May twenty-fourth meeting as amended.
As, as written.
As written, not as amended.
What you got was what was written. Yeah.
As written.
Uh, all those in favor? Ready? Any other liaison? Comments? How are your, how are your new people coming along?
Um, so, uh, our new administrative assistant from zoning board of appeals and HDC, Haley Walker. Um, she's been with us for three weeks and, um, she's still coming back. So, and she actually, um, took a shot at, um, drafting a set of HDC minutes, which I, I'm shocked because um, doing, doing minutes is, it's, has a little bit of art and a little bit of, um, creativity and so, but she did phenomenal, so, um, we're, we're very excited. Um, but she's, yeah, she's jumping in, you know, both feet and our new senior planner, um, Heather Gill leaving. Um, baby number two hasn't come yet, so, um, but, uh, her name's Anne Clifford. Um, she comes by way of the city of Waltham. Uh, she has been the curator for the Stonehurst, um, the Payne Estate in Waltham for probably twenty-three years. Um, so, uh, and the Payne Estate, um, is a national register, um, structure, but also is, um, a national um, landmark with, it's an oldstead landscape as well. So, um, she has, um, just an amazing knowledge of historic preservation and historic landscape preservation. So today was her first day, um, and, uh, it went well, but, uh.
I'm hoping she'll be back.
And I'm, we're hoping she'll be back tomorrow. Uh, but we're really, we're, we're really excited, so. Um, so yeah, we'll be working with Anne with the CPC as well, so, um, she's incredibly knowledgeable, it's. But, uh, we are, um, have the, you know, the transportation planner that, um, will be, um, hopefully pulling somebody into that role, uh, and.
You said that's a half, halftime role?
Um, currently, yes, I think the town manager may be looking at, um, budget funding to see if we can make it a full-time position. I, I definitely think, um, I'm surprised this community hasn't had somebody who had a more active role in all of the transportation items, that's not just the shuttle or the bike share or, um, but the, um, working with engineering on complete streets, um, and potentially, you know, conversations with the superintendent on, you know, different safe rule, route to school options and, and a lot of things. So we have to find, we have to create an office. Um, so the planning division, um, at the end of, beginning of July, um, will be, um, I'll be in the, um, the building commissioner's last day is next Friday, he is retiring. So, um, I'll temporarily be moving into his office. Um, we have a staff person in, um, empty office in natural resources. Um, Haley and, and Heather will be moving in the second floor conference room. Um, Marshall will be moving over to where Heather Gill's office was, basis of our month. And the two offices in the back, um, will be made slightly smaller and a third office will be put in total, so, um, kind of be, yeah. Can be challenging around here.
I was half expecting you to say that is going to become an office.
Oh, yeah. It's bigger than one of the offices upstairs. The only other liaison, uh, report I can say is, um, the board's aware that the town has started online permitting. Um, the building department has it, health, uh, natural resources is getting ready to go online. Uh, engineering has online, um, all of the fire department permitting is online. Uh, water and sewer has started to go online with some of theirs. Um, I, the town clerk, um, dog license, well, next time you go will be online. Um, so it's now to the point we are getting to doing, um, the planning board, um, which we say the most, I, I still don't know how online permitting is going to work through planning board and zoning board of appeals, but um, we're doing our little kickoff meeting with the consultant in two weeks, so. Let's see. Yeah, the, the, the board, planning board, the board of appeals and there's, um, you know, some of the permits have, you know, there be some conditions they can be very specific, so I'm, I'm still not sure how online permitting is going to work, but. There we go.
And then, uh, general public comments. You can't see this, there is nobody in the room, so. And then, how are we looking online? If you are online, yeah, please raise your hands, uh, if you can. Alright, Pamela, you popped up first, go, it looks like you already unmuted yourself, so please, uh, go ahead.
Thank you, Pamela Britt, thirteen Concord Green, welcome, Sue. You guys have, I think, the most important job here. I do hope that you find a way to creatively rewrite the zoning and so on to get us the kind of environmentally responsible clustered housing with mixes of uses, including maybe some apartment buildings with that we need. I, I hope you consider removing the sort of traditionally accepted, um, things like arbitrary height requirements that require the buildings to be only at the most three stories or actually two stories. Because any taller building that we have that has, say, apartments in it and, um, or a, say, the bottom floor covered parking and the, um, uh, commercial building in the front would allow us to have parkland around it. If you only have it two levels, then there's a, um, really smaller number of housing units we could have there. Um, and please use your creativity to incentivize the kinds of things that we can't require just like you did for the planned residential development. And I'm sure you can do that, I would have supported. Um, but also please, when you're hiring consultants to help you, would you, would you get one that's not a traditional one, who's, who, who is up to date on, on the latest urban development with green building and the, the, the latest, uh, ways that we can do things that aren't the standard, that are the state of the art instead? I would have liked to have seen an example that showed shops on the front and residences above. And maybe parking on the, like, like you were talking about having Sue residences behind the, the shopping in the front. You could also have covered parking behind and the residents above. Just please creatively find a way to incentivize things and make sure to include all electric building.
Okay, alright, thank you very much, Pamela. Always good to see you too. Is there, there was somebody who came up for a second, I don't know if that was accidentally or.
Hi, Scott Richardson, two sixty Elsinore Street, um, just wanted to say thank you, welcome, Sue, and, um. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't know him, but I, but I, but I know you, thank you, well, welcome, welcome as well. Um, and Elizabeth, you know, I know that it sounds like there's a lot of turnover going on, on the, uh, town staff and I just appreciate you and your expertise and your commitment and I can imagine that all the turnover and the new hires adds to your workload and I appreciate that on behalf of my family, thank you.
And is there anybody else? I'm not hearing or seeing anybody else at, uh, eight, a little after eight thirty. Make a motion to re-join the meeting.
So you technically do not need to move to adjourn a meeting, the chair has the ability to adjourn a meeting at the end of business.
Sorry. So, yeah, it's a little after eight thirty, uh, close, close the.
Adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting. Thanks, thank you everybody.